Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Row.
Graham Pizoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a forum.
Four of all minutes.
Tonight we have the council meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2019.
Motion to approve. Alvin Massey, second by. Alvin Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
Mayor? For the good of the city?
Good evening and thank you for starting the meeting on time. Appreciate it. Tonight, we requested some time for a presentation by Utility Service Partners, Inc. We received some information from Ashley Shaworski, who is a representative of that company. They're affiliated with the National League of Cities. This plays into something the council president proposed a few years ago that we looked into. And we were considering two options at the time. One, the city doing the insurance program itself. We didn't believe it was feasible for us to do it. And two was to look for an outside vendor. So we requested that Ashley be present here tonight to make a presentation, not only to the council, but to the public at large that will be viewing on television. And so without further ado, I'll bring up Ashley from Utility Partners, Inc.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me here. As the mayor said, my name's Ashley Shaworski and I represent the National League of Cities Service Line Program. Our service line program is the only one that's endorsed by the National League of Cities, but the company I actually work for is called Utility Service Partners and we administer this program. And we are a Better Business Bureau business with an A-plus rating, as well as we did win the Torch Award for Marketplace Ethics from the Better Business Bureau. So that is something that we're very proud of and are always striving to maintain that high level of ethical standards while conducting business. But what our program really is designed to do is to help address the public policy issue of aging infrastructure. We know that cities like yours, all across the United States, really do their part to either upgrade or maintain their public infrastructure, but the homeowner's portion of these lines were kind of being forgotten about. So that's actually why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like ours readily and easily available to cities and towns all across the country. So they went out, did the research on your behalf, and we were the company that they did choose to provide the program. So what we would do is we would partner with your city in order to make our completely optional program available to your residents. And we provide homeowners with protection on their external water or well lines, sewer or septic lines, as well as their in-home plumbing. And we always provide these services with a complete turnkey approach for the city, where we handle all the aspects of the program. We do the marketing, the billing, the claims management, and customer service. And there is absolutely no cost to your city if you choose to participate in the program and the city would receive an incremental revenue stream for their participation as well. What I always though think is the best benefit of our program is that it simply helps to raise awareness. Pretty much every city that I speak with across the country, I normally hear the same type of thing, that when a resident does have some type of issue with one of their external lines, a lot of time their first call is to someone here at the city. And then you all are left being that unfortunate bearer of bad news, explaining to a homeowner that these lines are not covered by the city, or typically their homeowner's insurance. So that's why I kind of think of our program as that free public awareness campaign, because all of the residents here would receive a letter in the mail from us and the beginning of that letter is simply educational. So that way, even if someone chooses not to enroll, at least in the future, they are well aware of what their service line responsibility is and just that the city tried to take a proactive approach at helping to educate them of that. And then that way, if they still come to you in the future, it makes that conversation a little bit easier for you all. Also, a huge benefit of our program is the peace of mind, because now the residents know for just a few dollars a month, they are able to transfer the risk of these lines onto us, a reputable company that is endorsed by the National League of Cities. And then that way, if they were to have an issue, they just make one call to us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and we would dispatch a local licensed plumber or contractor to do the repair. So that is a large benefit of our program, that we do only use plumbers from the local area. And we do that for a lot of reasons. Mainly, we want to keep as much money here within your local economy as possible, but also the plumbers from your local area will be familiar with your local codes and will make sure to do the work up to our standards, as well as yours, which includes to get all of the proper permits for those repairs. And what happens is if we did partner with your city, we would develop a contractor network to specifically service your claims. And you all here could be as much or as little involved in that as you would like, where some of our city partners will actually provide us a list of plumbers that they're familiar with or already working with. Some, if you require specific licensing, will just give us a list of all the licensed ones and some want to stay out of it completely. Any of those options work for us. But with all of the plumbers, for them to join our network, we go through a detailed vetting process where we make sure that they are licensed, have the proper amount of insurance, are bonded, they don't have any type of open complaints with the Better Business Bureau, but we also would conduct background checks and drug screenings, because we always want to make sure that it's someone that a resident here feels completely comfortable with coming to their home, as well as inside of their home. And as for our coverage, we do offer three completely separate involuntary programs. We offer an external water line coverage, which would cover well lines, an external sewer line coverage, which covers septic lines, as well as our in-home plumbing. Our two external products are set up pretty much identically, where we would begin to cover those lines wherever they become the resident's responsibility, so all the way out at your city mains to where those lines would enter their home. So that way, if a resident were to be having an issue, whether it was a broken, a cracked, a leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog that needs cleared out, really anything that impedes the flow of their lines, as well as we do cover the thawing of frozen external water lines. That homeowner just has to make a quick call to us. We dispatch that plumber and then the plumber would bill us directly for the service. But what your residents receive for their coverage is up to $8,500 towards each and every repair incident. So that is something that separates us from other companies out there, is that ours is always on a per incident basis, so we never have an annual or a lifetime limit, as well as we never limit the number of incidents or claims that a homeowner can have in a calendar year. So again, that resident does always receive up to that $8,500 towards each and every incident, and that does include any repairs that may be needed to their public streets or public sidewalks, as well as we do not have any type of service fee or deductible, because we would never want that $50 or $100 service fee to deter a resident from actually giving us a call and getting our issues taken care of. And then as for our third product, that one is our in-home plumbing and was really developed by request of our current municipal partners, as it kind of was that missing piece of the puzzle. And that would cover any of our water, sewer, or drain lines that are actually in the home after the point of entry, that either may be broken or leaking. It also includes any lines that could be embedded under a slab or a basement floor and coverage for the repair of clogged toilets. And this one is similar again, where there's never a service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limit. We never limit the number of claims that anyone can have. In the in-home plumbing, they always receive up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. And we really do come to find that when someone chooses to enroll in any of our options, they are a little bit more proactive about getting their issues taken care of, because you know everyone's always nervous to call that plumber, because they have no idea what it's going to cost. So now the resident knows the cost of determining what their issue is and getting it taken care of is not coming out of their own pocket. And then as I mentioned at the beginning, another feature of our program is actually the revenue piece for the city. So what the city does receive in return for their partnership with us is 50 cents per month per paid warranty contract. So essentially, if a resident did choose to enroll in all three of our products, the water, the sewer, and the in-home plumbing, then the city could receive up to $1.50 per month per household, and that is paid to you in the form of a revenue stream every January. A lot of our partners choose to do different things with this. Obviously, anyone could do anything that they want and some do just put it into the general fund. But we do have some cities that will use it to help a resident that may be having trouble paying one of their utility bills from month to month. I know some will use it for different types of social services programs you already have initiated here within the city. And we even do have a partner that uses it to go towards their annual fall festival. So it's really however you all see fit. And then another benefit of our program, since you all are not currently members of the National League of Cities, one of our benefits is that we would pay the city's dues to the National League of Cities for three years. So that's included in the agreement. And then I know the big thing everyone wants to know though is how we market our program. So we only ever market by direct mail, so you never have to worry about us calling door-to-door, anything like that. We standardly do have three mail campaigns in a calendar year, which are in the spring, the fall, and the winter. And the reason why we have three campaigns is because we offer three products. But one nice thing is we never send anything out to a resident unless we have the city's review and approval prior. So before each and every one of those letters go out, we would send you a digital copy of that letter. We want the city to not only have input on what goes to the residents, but know exactly what they receive. Once we get the approval, we let you know the dates that we would mail those out. And if we do not receive the approval, even if you've approved it, you know, five other times, we never mail to the residents for that campaign. So the city always has complete control on if and when a letter were to go out. And just to give you a quick idea of what that normally looks like, the beginning, as I mentioned, is that educational piece, letting a resident know exactly what their service line responsibility is. The back of the letter has even a little diagram, so they know what we're talking about and frequently ask questions. But it is an introductory letter where the city would introduce this program to its homeowners, but it always clearly states that we are a separate company providing this, as well as it's 100% optional for a resident. It does go out with the city's either logo or letterhead. That way, your homeowners know that this is the program the city's participating in. But the bottom of that has all of our information. Our phone number is the only number listed on there, so they call us with questions or to enroll. Same thing with our website. They go through for lots of good information or enroll directly on our website, or they would return the form right to us. So really, the city's involvement in the program is just in that introductory piece, but once someone chooses to enroll, all of the correspondence is directly between us and them. We know you all at the city have more than enough going on here, so we do handle all the aspects. We do the marketing, the billing, the claims, and the customer service. And just to give you an idea, we do have over, just about 700 municipal partners across the United States. We do have three here in the state of New York. And I really just think by partnering with us, you're just giving the residents an option that otherwise would not be available to them, but it's always 100% their choice if they want to sign up, as well as we never have any type of minimum participation. So even if a couple residents wanted to take advantage, we would still serve those few residents. And I know I've just rambled on to you here for the last few minutes this evening, so I'm sure you also may have some questions for me as well.
Alvin Massey?
Can we clarify just one thing? If you have an incident, an external and internal at the same time, I know the external was 8,500, the internal was three, is it 11,500?
If you would be enrolled in both and they were two separate.
I'm assuming that we had.
Correct. And if there was issues on both portions.
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation by you.
Thank you.
Really was. I'm impressed.
Alvin Johnson?
On page one, when it says property owner data, if city elects to do so, city may provide company with property owner data. Are we, is our city going to do that, Commissioner? Are we going to provide property owner data, or how does that work?
If that's what, if that is what you decide, basically she's looking for.
Well, I have no criteria to make that decision.
Name and address, basically, right?
Correct. And that's 100% optional. That just talks about if the city provides it.
A lot of language in the document about privacy and access information.
Correct. So if the city provides the data, we're the only people that see that. It's only used for the direct marketing of those three products that are in that agreement. It is not a requirement of the program that the city provides the data. That's just if they do. It says that the city has the authority to do so and the privacy of it. I'd say it's about 50/50. Half of our partners give us the data, half either don't have the capability or don't want to. I normally do recommend if they can provide it, it's typically more accurate than what we can purchase, but it's not, if you can't do it, that's not a big deal. We have a third-party vendor that we use and we purchase the data. So either way, it's fine for us.
And one other question with respect to your products. So you've answered the cap question. Is that billed to the resident semi-annually or annually, or how do they get billed?
They have a lot of options. They can monthly, quarterly, annually. They can receive a bill in the mail, they can do it online, automatic withdrawal, but we do all of that with them. And it's always month-to-month, so even if someone pays annually and they want to cancel, they just give us a call and we would refund any unused premium.
And when you say internal plumbing and drainage, are you going to be my plumber from now on? You said you'd fix a clogged toilet. Is that what you meant to say? And what if my water heater blows up and it floods my basement?
So it would not cover the appliances or valve, the like faucets and things like that. So it's the actual infrastructure in your walls, as well as the repair of clogged toilets.
Okay. Seems pretty seamless to me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alvin Tobin?
Sounds good. I mean, I have an older home. I probably would get this. But I have a question. So let's say, I don't know what's happening to my water system, breaks. I call a plumber in, he says your water line's broken. Would you take like that, like, so it wasn't one of your plumbers? Can I submit a receipt for the initial?
So.
All for the plumber to come out and tell me that the water line broke, or is?
So you, we would want you to call our plumber. Call our plumber first. We are, call center takes calls 24 hours a day if you need to file a claim. That plumber is expected to be, or give you a call within four hours and be at your home within 24 hours. Typically, it's less than that four hours, but that's the guideline that we give. Sometimes we will do a reimbursement, but our terms say you must call our contractor first.
And then I have little kids. Let's say they drop a toy in the toilet, and it's just a clog. It's not a broken thing. I call the plumber, I call you guys, you find out it's a clog, not a broken water main. Do I get billed for that?
No, we would come out, because repairs of clogged toilets is a covered service.
Oh, so even if it's stuck in like the action figures or whatever?
Correct. Yes.
It's happened.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alvin MacLeiner?
In Middletown, we have certain plumbers that, right, are licensed to work in town. Like you can't just call. So we have a smaller pool here, I think, right, of licensed plumbers that work inside Middletown. That's something that you would work with, you would have our list and work off of that.
Correct. So we make sure that they follow all of your guidelines. So if they, if for some reason we needed more plumbers, we would make sure that they get licensed with the city too. But typically, we work off that list if the city gives that to us. If not, that's one of the questions, do they meet those requirements? So.
And that's changing soon too. Alvin MacLeiner?
Thank you. If you call, you find you need the work done and the job is finished, but you're not happy with the job, or you don't think it was done well, or everything's left torn up, or whatever, I don't know what problems you could run into. I know some of the issues that can come up. What kind of procedure do you have for that? Is the contract between the plumber and the homeowner? Is it between you and the plumber? And what kind of dispute resolution would you have?
Sure. So our, the resident and us have a direct contract for the service, but also all of our plumbers that join our network are in an agreement with us as well. With all of our jobs, they are guaranteed for one year from the date of that. So if a resident was not happy with the service, they could give us a call, we would send someone back out to figure out what's going on, even if they canceled the service the day after they got the claim. They are still, the work is guaranteed for one year from the date of it. But we also have a great resolution team in our offices. Every one of our partners has an account manager that's really just there to deal with any type of issues that may arise, as well as we have a customer advocacy team that's any of those higher-level issues that do arise and they work directly with me, our account management team, as well as that resident to make sure that they are resolved quickly for them.
Okay. Thank you. Does this apply to also townhomes and condos?
So it is, do your townhomes here, do they have a single service line that runs to them? And do they own that, or do they have like an HOA?
They own, yeah. HOA owns it?
HOA and we would own it.
We have some townhomes that'll have an individual line going in. And then we have condos where one line goes into the building.
Okay. So if a townhome, if it has the individual line and that property owner actually owns it, then they would be eligible to enroll. A lot of times, the HOA owns that, so they're not eligible. You have to be, you have to have a single service line and own that line. So that's kind of the delineating factor for them.
But would they be eligible for the internal?
Most likely, a condo would not be, just because of the way it's set up, but a townhome, yes.
Alvin Burr?
For instance, let's say, is there any waiting period? So if I signed up for this, and let's say I had this problem before I signed up, do you make that determination that it's our problem or your problem?
So we do not go out and inspect the lines, but there is a 30-day waiting period. So you can file a claim on the 31st day.
All right. Thank you.
Then cancel on 30.
Yes, you can.
Anyone else? Well, I appreciate, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you all for having me. If you think of other questions, my number's in there and I'd be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Good job.
Anyone else from the city who would like to address the council? I didn't hear. Marks of Department Heads, Economic Development?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to tonight touch upon the annual tree lighting and parade. As you all know, it's a three-phase event. Starts with the cutting, then the decorating, and then the actual parade and lighting. And it's, it's become a true community event and very successful evening. We had about 35 groups participate, marchers, we estimate about 400 marchers in the parade, floats, bands. You know, special thanks to the Donovan family again for donating the tree and all the sponsors that were involved were Tolo Electric Union, Aspen, Regional Trucking, Healy Brothers for providing the car to bring the family that overloaded the car, right? It was a lot of fun. They had a good time. And, you know, we had a lot of people who volunteer for, you know, crowd control and stuff, thanks to them. And our emcee, Andy Brittle, this time counted from 10 on back, so that was a personal joke. But it was, it was just a spectacular night. And again, thank you to the entire, everybody that's involved in this. It's not just one department, from the police department, fire department, DPW, recreation, the bid. You know, my team at the Paramount Economic Development, especially Stephanie, Joseph, and Eileen, they really, you know, worked hard on this with us and they did a great job. And also at the Paramount, It's a Wonderful Life, ended the night, over 500 people came to see that. So it was just a spectacular evening, a great weekend. I spoke to a lot of the merchants downtown and it continued on Saturday with Small Business Saturday. So I just, again, thanks to everyone and we're looking forward to the rest of the holiday season.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. I'm going to be brief. I'm just going to focus on the efforts of DPW. I'm not going to report to you about any of the other activities in DPW. If you have any questions, please let me know. I just want to call out and emphasize the effort that DPW has put in during this storm, snow, ice, sleet event. Basically, they started nine o'clock Sunday morning and they did not go home until this morning at 5:00 in the morning. So about, we're talking about almost 44 hours of work. Of course, the men, they have, you know, they have the luxury of going and relaxing whenever they feel tired. If they cannot continue, they can tell their supervisor that, hey, we're no longer able to work, or we don't want to work, we don't feel good. And there is no punishment or retribution against them of any kind. So everybody stayed, everybody worked, they put their heart into it, and really, it was very difficult, especially on Sunday, because of the sleet and ice. And we had to use a lot of salt in there in the process in order to keep our roads clean, so, and safe. So with that being said, I just want to remind the public that please do not shovel the snow back. It's not, it's not like a retribution between city put it on my sidewalk, now I'm going to throw it back in the street. Please do not do that, because you will be causing hazardous condition on the street if you shovel it back out on the street from your sidewalk. Try to put it on your front yard and eventually it's going to melt. It's not going to hurt anything, so please do not throw it back on the street and be patient and acknowledge the effort that these men, these men have put in going back and forth to try to keep the streets clean. Today, we have some incident today, after our men went home at 5:00 after working for almost 44 hours. Some people shoveled the snow back on the street. It's not advisable. People understood the message, so please bear with us and do not do that. We don't do it on purpose when we plowing. We're not, we're not doing it on purpose to put the snow or ice on your sidewalk. It's just that's the nature of the beast. When we are plowing, the snow has to be pushed to the side. Another thing, just a reminder, to please shovel from around the fire hydrant in front of your house or in your neighborhood, because that's very critical for the fire department. I know the fire chief is here, he might want to talk about it a little bit. We don't have enough men in the middle of a storm or after a storm, because we have to keep cleaning the streets, wherever there's snow that's piled up, we have to take it out. There's some melting that happens and then freeze will occur after the melting, so we have to go and again treat the roads with salt after the storm. We have to clear the intersections, we have dump trucks we have to load and take out. We don't have enough men to go and expose each and every fire hydrant, so please do yourself a favor and do us a favor, work with us by cleaning the snow and ice from around your fire hydrant. And we appreciate that very much. And again, my hats off to our men for heroic effort in this storm. Just the length of the hours and the nature of the storm was difficult. With that being said.
Alvin Massey?
Commissioner, do you have any idea what our, how much salt we have on hand now?
Our store is about 60, we're about 65% full right now.
Thank you. Alvin MacLeiner?
Commissioner, I know there were still a whole lot of leaves out on the street when this snow fell. So I'm sure once it melts, they'll still be there, or they'll be along the street. What, I didn't double-check on the date we're supposed to stop picking up leaves, but because of the storm, will we be able to extend that a little bit perhaps?
Yeah, yeah, we'll continue, we'll continue to do it, but we don't want people to keep adding stuff after the deadline, because we're going to continue until spring.
Deadline was the sixth or something like?
Yeah, I don't recall that. It's on our website. I don't recall that. I don't know if John, if you remember it. It's on our website.
It's the end of this week.
End of this week.
This is going to be the last week.
End of the week.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I don't know how many people are going to be adding anymore. Everything is covered with snow anyway, right now. So yes, we will, we will pick up, obviously.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Yeah.
Fire chief?
We participated, good evening, everybody. We participated in the tree lighting and I must say it was a great event, well participated. Thank you, Jacob, for bringing up about the hydrants. Everybody in the community, help us, help you dig out your hydrants. And if you need help, call the firehouse or the DPW office. And we have two resolutions on the agenda tonight. Looking forward for your support. That's all I have.
Any questions for the fire chief? Alvin MacLeiner?
Just quickly, chief, how are we doing this year in number of calls compared to last year? to last year?
We're, we are actually down about two hundred calls from last year at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief. Police Chief?
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I just wanna piggyback on something that Jacob did say about the staff at DPW and under his leadership. They do an outstanding job. I hear comments all the time about when people do hit the city limit, it's the difference in the streets from outside the city. It helps not just our residents, but it helps all the emergency services respond to where they're needed as well. So Jacob, thank you to you and your staff for always keeping the streets clean for us. Just also a little bit additional on that, overnight parking is still in effect or is in effect, two AM to six AM, no parking in any city street. But that also goes into effect for any type of snow or weather conditions. We need to keep the streets clear of parked cars to allow DPW to do their job. And as Commissioner Twill was talking about throwing snow in the street, it is a violation of our city code. It's not what we wanna do is summon someone for throwing snow in the street. But if it becomes an issue, we do have recourse for, for that. December ninth, the cops, Police Department will be partnering with Parks and Rec to host Cops and Cookies. This will be our third year. It's a successful event, be at the Parks and Rec Building Monday, December ninth. We look forward to that and interacting with the youth of our community. It's a great event. Other than that, I have nothing unless anyone has any questions for me.
Any question for Police Chief? Thank you, Chief. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everybody. So after a successful tree lighting parade, I know Maria and her staff, along with the mayor, Miguel, also had the very next day a field dedication for Richard Woslayer. And the Davish Park expansion, that facility going in there will be named the Richard P. Woslayer Athletic Field. At Coles on Saturday, there was over two hundred people in attendance, which just shows the value that Dick Woslayer has to so many people in this town. And it's greatly deserved. The city recognized him really well. Great job by Maria and Maria's office and staff and the mayor's office. I know the family really appreciated it and alumni and things that were there also appreciated it. So I'd like to thank the school district too. They helped us get a bell over there and put together also some presentations. But Mr. Dick Woslayer, you are greatly appreciated and it's a well-deserved, well-deserved recognition for you. There's two resolutions tonight that we have up. One is for the, authorize the mayor to sign the contract we do every year with the Geese Police. That helps tremendously keeping our parks clean. Without it, it's actually just a disaster. You can't even walk around the parks. And the other one is a resolution for us to go into contract with the Orange County Youth Bureau. This year, the city of Middletown can receive solutions funding up to fifty-five thousand dollars is what we were approved for. Fifty being with the Recreation Department covering our summer feeding program, our summer youth leadership academy, our boxing program, and our teen center. And another five thousand is with the Police Department with the Too Good for Drugs, Too Good for Violence Program. So we thank the county every year and that's another fifty-five thousand going towards youth, positive youth development programming in our city. And lastly, just check our website with the holidays here. We have so many special events going on. You can call the Recreation Office as well and we will let you know what's going on. But there's something basically every week. And winter registration is coming to a close here in two weeks. So if you're interested in volleyball, basketball, kids play cheerleading, after-school programs, again, call the office, check the website and we'll, we'll help you get registered. And that's all I have tonight.
Any question for Chris? Al McLeaner?
What time does the, when does the Little League registration end? Does that keep going?
The very last one, I think, I, they gave us a form, I think, is, I wanna say January eleventh, but I think there's, there's one December seventh. I just looked this morning, I think one December eighteenth and I think one January eleventh and it's like over. So it, they have it on their Facebook page and I think it's also on the city website, Little League.
It's on the homepage. The login page.
John helped Little League, gave them a link.
They can sign up right online.
Yep, and the red, they do use our, our building. They're in the front hallway. But I believe there's only three registrations left and then they're setting up coaches and ordering uniforms.
Okay, very good. I know, 'cause it's in the winter, some people, you know, think of that as a spring.
Correct, people come April, they wanna sign their child up for Little League and it's way too late, they're already playing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. City Clerk?
I have nothing this evening.
Any question for John? Thank you, John. Remarks of the Mayor? Take your time.
Yes, I'd like to thank Ashley for the presentation. It's a, it's a good program. I think many people will buy into it, especially as we know the complaints that we get from people when they do have a defective line. And the cost seems reasonable. And now that Sparrow's Toys in the Toilet are gonna be covered, I think there's a lot of people in your position with toys in the toilet. So we, hopefully the council will, will take up the contract. There's a marketing agreement that was part of your packages. It'll be reviewed by Corporation Council and possibly at the next meeting, we can, we can pass it. I also want to join in with the pat on the back with the snow removal. They did work an awful lot of hours. And they do go back and sleep for a few hours here and there, but it, it was a good job by Mark Pengel and his crew. I believe the snow, Mr. Massey told me was thirteen inches? Is that what we received?
They're reporting thirteen point two inches.
Thirteen point two, so that's a pretty significant snowfall. And, and combine that with the sleet and the ice and, and the amount of salt that was used, you know, you did get set up by Jacob, that when he talked about the salt, because there is a budget transfer that he's doing tonight for a salt transfer so he can fill it up by the end of the year. It made sense. So the Board of Estimant approved it after intense discussion. So I think it is on the, it's a resolution this evening. The Christmas Tree Program was, was fantastic. I think it's the largest crowd I've seen. And the, the tree is beautiful, the, the crowd is beautiful, the weather held out. Maria and her staff did a good job, along with all the other departments that participated. Mark Pengel led the, the charge with his motorcycle and actually that was my mother in his sidecar, ninety years old, and she chose to ride in the sidecar. And I think up until that point, Mr. Massey was the oldest person to ride in the sidecar, right? The only... So she beat you.
Not by much.
Not by much, I don't know. But we do have another event coming up during the holiday season. The Festival of Lights that we do in conjunction with Temple Sinai will be on Feb, on December twenty-second, excuse me, at the Something Suite Park, Run for Downtown Park next to Something Suite. I don't have a time on it right now, but I think it's early evening. And we'll be providing that information to the public and to, and to the council. Hopefully it'll be well attended as the, as the Christmas Tree Lighting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, okay. So, five o'clock. One thing to add to what Jacob was talking about, about throwing snow in the street, is also clearing sidewalks. You have twenty-four hours at the, after the end of a storm to clear your sidewalk. We will be sending out notices and we will be clearing sidewalks of people who do not do that. It's a safety issue and you will be billed for failure to clean your sidewalk if we have to go out and do it. So please, I encourage you to take the time to go out and shovel your walk, have somebody shovel your walk and, because it's quite expensive to have a city crew go out and do it for you. So the, it doesn't make sense not to do it because if we have to, you're not gonna be a happy person. I also wanted to, hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving and the kickoff to the holiday season. Downtown was very active over the weekend. We expect it to remain very, very busy throughout. And we continue to plan for the bidding of the parking improvements and the streetscape improvements. We've been meeting with the Governor's Office and with the Economic Development people of the state to final, and presenting them with our final plans. We're hoping next week, early next week, we will have a, some type of ribbon cutting at the Woolworth Building. We're trying to finalize the date and time and who will be here. But we will be making that announcement over the weekend for the opening of that building, which is one of the parts of the DRI project that was funded through, through the Governor's, through the Governor's Office. And I believe that's all I have. And I'll take any questions.
Any question for the Mayor? Al McTobin?
Unrelated, I'm seeing that the Heritage Trail's coming along. I've driven along it. It made me think, I missed the initial discussions. Is it like county park or once the park, once the trail comes into the city, is now like a city park and we're in charge of?
It's not a county park at all. None of the trail is a county park. We've encouraged them to make it a linear park throughout the county, but the money that's being used to fund it is transportation money. So it's actually like intermodal transportation, try to get cars off the road. There'll still be regulations, the county, well, the property will be ours. The trail will be, have an easement through our property and other property that, if they might have easements on other private pieces also. So the regulations that the county imposes on the trail will be in place. There's one unique difference between the rest of the trail, from Harriman to Goshen and us, is this is really the first part of the urban, the real urban center that the trail will be going through. So there's gonna be some, you know, unique issues to address and lighting being one of them. And so we're, we're finalizing all those plans. Jacob and I were at a meeting with the County Parks Department last Friday and their planners and we're, the, the big trick right now is crossing East Main through the, by the corner, by the dentist's office and how we're getting down Railroad Avenue and through the parking lots. And once we all agree on that, then that project will be out to bid sometime in 2020. But Phase One is under construction, as you said. Any other questions?
Any question for the Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Remarks of Aldman, Alman Massey?
Jacob, I'd like to echo everyone else's and I'm sure you're gonna get it around this whole audience here, up here. Your department, your entire department, and especially the people that were out there for all those hours, just fantastic. We really appreciate it. We thank the leadership, we thank the people that were actually out there, the men and women that were doing the work. And I know in my neighborhood, everyone had nothing but compliments for you having to go out and then having to go back out again and then a third time and a fourth time. We really appreciate it. And the salt, we argue every year, but it's a good thing. And finally, I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. I just wanna apologize. I know there were a lot of great festivities going on from Wednesday all the way till Saturday and Sunday. I wasn't at any of them. People have asked if there was something, was I upset or anything like that? I was under the weather and that's the reason I wasn't there. I certainly would have been and I thank everyone that was involved, Maria, all the departments and everything for what you do for us. Thank you very much.
Alman Tobin?
I agree with Alman Massey. Great job on the DPW and the plowing and it keeps our streets so much safer. I do notice when I leave town and coming back into town, you know, the pavement's like, is clean and it's safer. The tree lighting, I, I couldn't find parking anywhere around. It was great, well-attended. You know, group effort, I mean, to the police officers handing out candy canes, to the, you know, the fire department and the DPW and all the floats and the parks and the, the park department with their float, that was very nice to, to train. So definitely become part of my family tradition to come light the tree and it's, I think a lot of people too. It's a great event. Thank you.
Al McGreen?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like the DPW compliments. I mean, it's amazing really to think of what these, the whole crew goes through. And also, you know, thank the police and fire departments for, for never complaining being out there as well, even, you know, if the roads haven't been plowed yet, they don't, they don't stop either. So we really have a well-oiled machine going on here. With regards to the parade, it was amazing. And though the tree is awe-inspiring, I think the size of the crowd and then anyone who was in the parade marching down, I think the parade stopped when you hit Woolworth and the Tompkins Building because for the first time, at least since, since I've been in the parade, you looked to your left and wow. I mean, the building just lit up from the, the inside, you know, seeing just all the great things that are going on downtown. That really was, was the first thing you saw and it was just really beautiful looking. And speaking of beautiful looking, the, the Coach Woslayer, the event was wonderful. But if you saw the renderings of the park, I know that the city had posted them, it's gonna be another just beautiful addition to our city. So great things are happening and glad everyone's, you know, warm and safe and thank you.
Alman Johnson?
I told Alman Massey I keep it under a half hour, so I wanna talk quickly. Yeah, DPW, whenever I wake up, no matter what happened the night before, I'm gonna look at pavement and that is a beautiful thing. Thank you, Jacob, and all that you guys do. The two events, Friday night for the tree lighting and Coach Woslayer, I thoroughly enjoyed both of them. Those are examples of things that people make them look easy, but they're not easy to do. So I thank all the people that make all those events occur, personal friends of Mr. Woslayer. And there was a lot of Middletown history in that room that night. Oh my goodness, it was, it was awe-inspiring. My paths keep crossing with Senator Metzger. Alderman Kleiner and I attended the tenants' rights hearing, a workshop that she had. With Cornell Coop, I attended an event where Amy's Kitchen was talking to some of the organic growers in the county trying to line up potential relationships. I'm also, there's some animal welfare issues that are coming before the, the government next year and I have a meeting with her to throw in my two cents. On the Legislative Committee, there are two things on my worksheet. One is a towing issue and the other is the double tree, a double pole, zombie pole. Those are on Alex's desk waiting. I'm sure he's got a busy quarter to finish up. I did provide them, both Jacob and Alex, with a, the copy of the law that Walchil put into effect in 2016 as a potential template for how we're gonna address that. I also put in your boxes, I attended the November fourteenth Regional Advisory Board meeting. I represent the city with, with the DA's office. It's always a learning experience for me. Darlene DeJesus ran the meeting. I was maybe one of two civilians, everybody else was law enforcement. The topic was criminal justice reform bill. I didn't really know that I would have to think about that very much, but it turned out I got to think about it quite a bit. And of course, my first bite at the apple was the DA's point of view, which was not a happy camper. And of course, they had a press, a press conference to talk about that. Then I got a chance to speak with Mayor and Chief. And regardless of how that conversation went, we know that Middletown is ready and able to implement the law to its fullest extent, starting January first, regardless of chatter. I listened to ACLU. I asked Darlene, well, where did this come from? Supposedly a case in Rikers where a gentleman ended up being incarcerated because he couldn't make bail. And that raises the issue of bail reform and does it adversely affect people of poverty, more so than others? And also, he ended up being incarcerated for longer than anybody anticipated, which got you back to the, to the discovery section that says this should happen in timely manner. So I've listened to ACLU, I've listened to law enforcement. I also took the chance to provide you with the NICOMP policy brief. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I found five comments interesting. One comment, confusion and serious concerns have arisen regarding how some of these amendments will be implemented and what impacts the amendments will have on local criminal justice system. Comment, new disclosure requirements spring the pendulum too far, placing a significant burden on law enforcement and prosecutors to provide discovery in extremely short time period, that would be fifteen calendar days. Comment, new disclosures laws will require state and local law enforcement agencies and prosecutors to dedicate significant human and fiscal resources processing evidence for disclosure to defendants. Comment, perhaps ominous, these new speedy trial requirements are likely to result in prosecutors being more judicious in the cases they prosecute. And anybody in public policy in the state of New York also knows the last comment I'd like to cite. This is another example of a non-funded mandate. We'll see how it goes. There are man and women hours that go into this bill. There are technology hours and upgrades that go into it. We'll see where it all lands, but it certainly has been an interesting conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Al Raygusum?
Good evening. Jacob, I just have to say it because it was an amazing handling of a difficult storm. The snow, snow just didn't stop. We had those hours of freezing rain and ice. It was messy. I was out four times to stay ahead of it. So I understand the frustrations of everyone who I spoke to who waited till the absolute end of the storm to address it. You just couldn't with this one. It was just too much quantity, it was too heavy, it was just a mess. But the DPW did a great job of keeping our roads clear. By contrast, to outside of city limits where I attempted to go yesterday, made a right turn on a County Route seventy-eight and couldn't stop turning, even though I was only going like four miles an hour, slid right off the side of the road. And I wanna just say thank you publicly to the three gentlemen who jumped out of a black Escalade and immediately ran out and shoved me right back out of the ditch. So my thank you, that there are good people like that out there. And that's really all I have tonight. I hope everyone stays safe throughout this past weekend and going forward because for the people who threw the snow back in the street, some of our streets are a little slippery again. So please do not put the snow back on the road. That's a safety issue. And for a personal note, it is my daughter's fourteenth birthday today, so I wanna wish Mia a happy birthday. Thank you.
Al McLeaner?
Thank you. I'm gonna start with next Monday will be our Second Ward Constituents Meeting. That'll be Monday, December ninth at seven PM, right here. And snow or whatever, unless they actually close the city, we'll be here. There will not be a Citywide Watch meeting next Tuesday. We are gonna wait until March to resume the Citywide Watch, but if you have any issues, you can always call or you can always come to our constituent meetings. Two things that will be coming up before our next meeting. One is Pearl Harbor Day, it's December seventh, of course. And that will be, I think it's, believe it's next Saturday at ten AM. They always do a remembrance ceremony at... They always do a remembrance ceremony at American Legion Post 151 out off of Wayway On the Avenue, and anyone's welcome to come to that. Mike Cody, a lot of people know who Mike Cody is. He really single-handedly put together that Town of Walk Hill Veterans Memorial Park, and he is having an event at Coles Island House on Tuesday, December 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and it's a recognition of adding a fourth section to their Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall. It's going to be a roast beef dinner, and Mike's number is 342-4629. You can always call and make reservations. Mike and I are the same age. We're on different sides of that war, but we work together very well. And Mike's an amazing guy. The Christmas Tree Ceremony and the celebration, and it was terrific, and I want to thank the Donovan family. I mean, that tree is magnificent, blue spruce, and that might be the tallest one we've had. And everyone, yeah, what a crowd. So everyone who turned out for that and everyone involved in making that happen, thank you. DPW, once again, I mean, Middletown, people will complain who drive into town about the roads being terrible, but once they get to Middletown, the roads were great. And that's what you always hear, and that's not by accident or happenstance. And you know, when the ABC Evening News leads their broadcast with the snow totals in Middletown, New York, we're getting hit pretty hard. It doesn't happen often, and I can see that we will not be borrowing money from snow and ice this year, because I think you're going to need all the salt you can get. The Dick Wolf Slayer event, again, well-deserved. It's a wonderful idea to name the field after Coach Wolf Slayer, and he's been such a part of Middletown. I know Marty Cool was delighted to have that Erie Bell out in the entranceway. It just looked great, and I, again, congratulate the... Because Port turned out to be a hell of a team this year, but Middletown kept the bell, so again, congratulations to them. And finally, with this weather, we know, you know, the Warming Station, it's run by volunteers, and there'll be another volunteer training on December 11th at 7:00 PM, and you can always go to the website, middletownwarmingstation.com, to sign up for an overnight volunteer, and they're also having volunteers help for a two-hour shift from 8:00 to 10:00 when the food is served and people come in, and that's proved to be very good. I want to thank Marilyn and Dave Bechtel and all the people who keep that going, and the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council. And I had Mulberry House open this weekend as a warming center, and Monday was a regular day, so the staff was there, and we all got along fine, and I thank them for that, so... Till next time. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Good evening, everybody. Fourth Ward Constituents Meeting is this Saturday, December 7th, at this chamber at 10:00 o'clock. Please come join Spire and I. Commissioner, I tip my hats to you and your department. I mean, this is the only time of the year, I don't mind my sleep being disturbed. As soon as that plow truck was going around my neighborhood every half an hour or so. So it's a great thing to get up in the morning, to just, you know, roads are nice and clear and heading to work. It's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Alderman Burr?
I'll echo my fellow Alderman. Jacob, your staff did a wonderful job. I also attended both events on Friday and Saturday. Friday was just phenomenal. It felt like an old parade day, chief, when the three or four people were deep on every road watching the parade, very long parade, till, God bless Maria, how she kept them all in line. What can I say about Coach? You know, he's a heck of a guy, well-deserved, and looking forward to that new park that's very nice if you ever get to see the photos. It's going to be phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank DPW. Great work out there, Jacob. Your men worked all through the night. Great weekend with the Wolf Slayer and also the tree lighting. Going back to what Alderman Johnson said about bail reform, this law was passed by our elected officials up in Albany through the budget. Never spoke about the open law, about how the bail reform passed. There's only about 49 laws that are affected by it, and I don't want to scare people, but we need to reach out to our elected officials in Albany, because they passed it, but they're very quiet of what they passed. Unfunded mandates, that means we're stuck with the bill, and they're facing a $6 billion deficit in the new budget. So out of the 49 laws, burglary, robbery, aggravated vehicular homicide, assault, third, failure to register as a sex offender, using kids for crimes, money laundering, there's a lot of crimes that they have to be released once arrested. Robbery, homicides, manslaughter. We, it's hard to run a city and get stuck with mandates, and then we're stuck to just... It's brought up by New York City. Shame on New York City. They have 10 million people, they have a poor system, poor court system, poor Rikers system. They'll take it upon the whole state of New York. It's very, very hard to Chief's Association to deal with what's going on. Please, if you're watching this show, this meeting, please call your elected official, get involved, and voice your opinion. This is dangerous, and it's going to come out January 1. They'll all be released, about 40-something percent at Rikers Island, Orange County Jail, every county jail. They're out. That means more burden on our officers, more burden on everybody else, and as soon as you arrest them, you have to release them. You can't set bail, they got to go. So yes, my Democratic partners in Albany voted for this. They passed it. Shame on them, and shame on New York City. New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, for the mayor to sign an agreement with emergency reporting that is compatible with the county for the Middletown Fire Department, excuse me, for a cost of $2,940 plus a one-time setup fee of $360, and this is a property budget item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Rem Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, to authorize the mayor to accept solutions funding from the Orange County Youth Borough, and following approval, to sign any and all necessary contracts on behalf of the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Rem Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to accept an award in an amount of $4,500 to participate in the statewide child passenger safety program effective October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Rem Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Rem Kasun, that 5,000 of the solutions funding that has been previously approved by the common council be added to Too Good for Drugs and Violence Budget Grant expense line for 2020.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Rem Kasun, second by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Rem Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to authorize the mayor to sign an tri-state geese police contract to control the geese population in Watts Memorial Park, Maple Hill Park, and Fancher Davich Park, and including park expansion.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Rem Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, to approve a change order, amendment number two, in the amount of $58,700 for the secondary screw pump replacement project for services from CDM Smith.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, second by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Rem Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $108,000 within the fire department budget, within the 2,000 fire department operating budget for various equipment and 207A retirement payments through 12/31/2019.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Rem Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, second by Alderman Massey, to amend the city code to add one handicap parking spot in front of 37 Harrison Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, second by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Rem Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, to authorize the treasurer to transfer from the general fund balance $121,410 to add 1,800 tons of salt at 67.45 a ton to maintain a full storage at the salt storage facility.